Okay, we'll go ahead and call our session of October 3rd, 2017 to order at this time. If they're going to please do their silence or turn off their cell phones if they would, and then join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions?
We've got one addition. Commissioner Winters has brought forth workforce office space discussion.
Okay, and is the other one for tomorrow?
Another one?
Yeah. Flora? Is that our?
Oh, shoot, I just write my own on here.
Okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Flowers' request as well.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
One of our first items, a timed item. It's a nuisance appeal. Kristen going away. Our nuisance officer, Eileen Harmon. Eileen, you want to start us off?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I sent you a package of information. You should be able to look at the photographs that you took, or that I took. I driven by and photographed this property three times. The first one was on 6th 6th, and then 9th 6th, and then 9th 26th, so this year. And this property is on the A2, so it's under, you know, some of the stuff in the nuisance ordinance, but it's not called under the category, but the things that I have checked. If you look at the photos, you can see there's junk, trash, vehicles, rubbish, garbage, people's cars. You know, it's a fire safety hazard, there's a burning fuel, you know, broken glass all over. They have big tires, look like it's one of many things that contain, could contain stagnant water, which makes me feel where there's things like breeding grounds. And, you know, the trash has been so bad, everybody's flying down the road, all down the road onto the neighboring properties, and I had complaints from all the neighbors too. So it fully complies with the nuisance ordinance?
Okay. And it's, your assessment's been appealed?
Yes.
So we probably need to hear from the elements. Commissioner, if you have any questions? We've done this time.
You know, the photographs pretty much speak for themselves. They're going across the property, and then the ones, I think I wrote on there, you know, they're going down the road on the way to the property. And I would be like these ones, that show the safe pressure and stuff, or stuff that's just blown everywhere.
Rainbow Road?
Yes. I think they call it North Rainbow Road. And this property is located right next door to the evidence. We do have a cleanup agreement on already, and the EQ's bringing them along. Can you just stay a second? I did clean out photos for you. Do you have any questions?
I don't think at this time.
So we'll call you back.
Eileen is here, and we'll just hear from her.
Can I remain here, or do you want to get?
Well, if you wouldn't mind coming out. How are you this morning?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good morning.
So, um, I'd like to start first with the side yard, where the vehicle parts glass, that sort of stuff is. So my husband's the fire chief of Christmas Valley. We actually had, or allowed the tow company to put a bunch of vehicles, the piles and masses of vehicles, on the property intentionally, for the purpose of training, as opposed to putting those on the fire department lot in the middle of town, where they've actually had trainings with them. They've had, what, three different counties, several agencies come out and do trainings, as well as with DPSSD. And, yeah, the intent was to remove them once that, you know, and those have been removed, even though we weren't finished with them, we got the notice and removed them anyway. There are some vehicles still on our property, most of which we own or are storing for someone. And a few of them, like the Black Honda in the picture, the motor's good, we're waiting to pull it, put it in the red Honda that's in another picture. And the rest are just, like I said, vehicles we own. The trash that's blowing down the road, yeah, that came in garbage bags, white garbage bags, just appearing up and down the road. And I'm sure if you were to have broken into any of them and found addresses on them, they were not our garbage. We have a dumpster, our garbage goes in our dumpster. This accumulation here is actually over several years. And if you look at most of it, directly across from our house, there's white buckets all over the place. We don't collect white buckets, they're restaurant-grade food buckets. Those would be from actually the other property that has the agreement with it and are ready to clean it up. We don't, I mean, she works at a restaurant, she brings home the leftovers for her animals in those buckets, and we have a lot of wind in Christmas Valley. And, I mean, if you look in there, there's also lots of night train bottles and beer bottles or cans. We don't drink beer, blow a night train or anything else. I mean, it is accumulation of quite a bit of garbage, and it used to be, once a year, after winter was over, we'd go out and pick it all up and put it in our dumpster, but it just kind of got overwhelming, and we don't do that so much anymore. And yes, we own a lot of our own ground as well, which we've been working on cleaning up and moving. I'm not sure what the problem with swimming pool is, there's no water. I, at the same time, don't want to fold it up and store it and have the line seated either. It does have a pump system when it is full, so, and the large tires actually are full of dirt and have stuff planted in them generally, so they would not accumulate water left the floor, bugs and such.
So you say that the garbage is spread along the roadways, or had it spread to someone else?
Yeah, I mean, literally, the wind blows your garbage to the next neighbor down the system, and the wind's pretty consistent out there in the winter.
Yeah, it is.
So the wind, most of the garbage would be?
I mean, if you go out, we own 20 acres. If you go out to that back, you know, towards the back of that 20 acres, there's a line of garbage, and you could just kind of follow that line right to our front yard.
So it's coming from south?
It is coming from, yes, the south east. Or the south and west, sorry.
So, Glenn, whenever you receive the notice, the notices to get hold of our department, the nuisance department, Eileen, and set up a plan for getting in compliance? It sounds like that you started that process and have made quite a bit of progress that direction.
Correct. Well, I just want to clarify really that that side yard, I mean, we really are using it for the benefit of, and, you know, it's my intent, we could put up a fence or whatever, because there will be future trainings and it will be a similar situation. Hopefully, you know, they'll be cleaned up a little faster, but it kind of happened once hay season, you know, the tow truck driver manages a farm, and so it just kind of drug on. But, you know, once he had time, he did it, and it's our intent to use that for that same purpose again. I mean, we have a large burn mound out there too, which there's nothing we can do with that this time of year anyway, until, you know, burn season. But it'll be a similar situation, we'll have the fire department come out and they'll do trainings as to how to put out a fire, I mean.
You mean the fire chief's going to follow the burn laws?
He does, yes.
That's very commendable of them. So that will be cleaned up as soon as the?
Right. And our scrap metal pile, we, we're in the process of moving it out behind our barn, so it's at least not visible until scrap becomes a reasonable price to, to turn in, so. But yes, we live on our property, I mean.
So whenever we establish the enforcement side of our nuisance and mandate our nuisance, our intent is for voluntary compliance and for people to work with us. So appreciate that you come in here on the pill site and mention that, you acknowledge some things and give an explanation. My question is to Eileen, have you seen the progress that has been made?
Um, yeah, I can notice, you know, I drove by on the 6th, and then I drove by and took some photographs on the 26th, and it looked like they do some appliances and some different things. So it did look like some things had been addressed.
How much 101 interaction?
I haven't talked to her at all, other than just the appeal letter and then the disagreement for the appeal, as I know.
Encourage some 101. You making some progress?
Yeah.
Can you work with Eileen to kind of line out what you expect and what you expect to accomplish?
Yeah, without going into any other details, we've had another situation where that very thing has been done before the whole month. Excuse me, our compliance officer sat down and just kind of built a little plan that they both agreed to. And if we can do that, that's the preferred method, we're not the Gestapo, you know, we're not.
Well, and I understand that, and I understand the position you come from, and there's one squeak you widdle in the community that causes a lot of squeaks for everybody else, and, I mean, and I understand where you come from, and that's, yeah, it's fair enough.
Well, you know, and as much as I think I know who you're referring to, I will take ownership in promoting and pushing forward with this board and with our budget committee. And we've sat as a board together for almost 11 years, and we've never had the means to do what we're now doing on behalf of the citizens. And we've tried to recognize, because I'm a property owner too, property rights and uses of people's property. It's a fine line, but we really wanted to commit on behalf of the whole community in Lake County, you know, this program. And Eileen gets, she gets put in a unique position because, you know, we're not going at it with a hammer, and she's trying to do, you know, a good job on behalf of everyone. So the more we can work together to get to what we need to get for everybody, the better off it's going to be.
So, in all honesty, as a community member, I think you've gone about it completely backwards to some degree.
Okay.
I mean, so, first of all, I don't live on Rainbow Road. I mean, Rainbow Road is two, two lots over from me. Our road doesn't even get a name. So not only do we not even get a name, but it's 57530, House 1, 2, and 3. We don't even get our own numbers. I mean, so, you know, ownership would be pride, and we have our own road, we have our own addresses, and, I mean, granted, we're the one road out there that didn't get its own sign, didn't get its own numbers, but it's a thing, I mean, kind of. But at the same time, my road is a giant pothole. The garbage man comes to get our, our garbage, and he complains that he's not going to do it anymore because our road is so bad. But I think if you want to have pride and ownership, that it can start at the road. I mean, not necessarily literally, but some infrastructure for the community would be a good place to start, which might actually stir some pride of ownership, you know, for the rest of the community. Because I know that we have a mess on our property, but it's the least of some of the messes. And I know that you're addressing those issues also, but, I mean, a lot of us in the community just feel like the north end is abandoned, and, and, and it's just my, my soapbox. But, I mean, so we feel like you've abandoned us, but the one thing you're going to bring to us is a nuisance officer? I mean, it's?
Well, we are here for hearing, Glenn, but that, that, that's, when you talk about pet peeves, that's mine too.
Right.
I live in the middle of the county. For years, a lot of the young people that are now parents or grandparents.
Right.
I've played ball for them, I was a coach at Paisley. I care very dearly. And I hear it from the folks down here that we don't care about the south, and I definitely hear it from Paisley, they say, you're the commissioner, and you live here, and you say that. And I hear it from the north end. I can start going down through the list of services we've tried to provide with the means that we have, including roads. And a lot of the roads that we talked about are not county roads.
Well, ironically enough, though, it's a county road until we ask you to maintain it, and then it's not a county road. But then if we attempt to maintain it, it's a county road, please stop doing that. And it's kind of what we're talking about.
And that's probably another discussion we need to have offline.
It is, yes.
And I'd love to have that with a road superintendent, because as far as I know, and I, you know, I, we need to have that discussion. But I do not believe that's a county road, and if we have somebody in the county telling me not to maintain it, that, that would shock me.
All right. Well, I think with the, in newer years past, or longer years past, it was a county road, don't touch it, and I think now it's kind of gotten to the point where if you can do something, do it.
Okay.
So it's kind of like, the tides change, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a difference between county road and public road, and our road department has been only on county roads, so. Commissioner Shalhoub's the latest on the public road department to flesh that out for you.
Right, that's what I have to say, so. And yes, we'll be happy to work with her on the plan.
That's an emphasis, as Commissioner Winters said, our first emphasis is to work together.
Right.
Right now, we don't really have any ordinance that we can put teeth into. There will be some later date for the people who just do not want to work. But appreciate, looks like you are willing to work with our recent personnel.
Right, well, and in part, my issue was really 10 days. It's taken me 20 years to collect it and 10, 10 days to clean it up. I mean, that was really more my issue than necessarily anything in some way.
Communication.
Yes, yep.
So, Eileen, did you have something you were going to say?
I think as far as the road, we can probably get in touch with Darwin, and maybe Darwin can work on naming the road and that type of thing.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to urge her, if people are dumping trash, call the sheriff, make a report.
Right, and we've done that.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, and, because I don't know, I just drive down and I ski, and I don't, you know, and I, I don't know. But we can work on stuff, you know?
Yeah, over the winter, there was probably 20 bags, I mean, full garbage bags just magically appear every morning on the road there and stuff.
Okay, but maybe with the dinner plan, you know, maybe we can work with, you know, some of our rural people where they get, you know, maybe some garbage removal out there, I don't know, but maybe that's something we can look into.
So once a year, they have the community cleanup day, and I would just go out there and pick up all that stuff, but like I said, it got to a point where it was just so not mine, and I was so over it, so.
The goal is just to save the tract of community for always.
So it sounds like we'll have Eileen report back to us at a later date with the plan, and some of the things she's talking about, would really like to see us be able to give your road a name, so, you know?
Right, well, I mean, it has a name, it just doesn't have a sign, but we're not actually deep as living on that street, I mean, it's just kind of.
Well, whatever we can do to help clear up anything we want cleared up around that, we'd be glad to.
Most of the public ways, whenever there's a third residence come onto those, then it's the, the cost of that third residence to pay for a sign and have that named. I may be, I'm not absolutely correct, there's two departments here that could probably talk to that better for the line. The numbering system is where that comes in, and so it sounds like there's some confusing, confusion on the road. It's a public way, I'm assuming not a county road, so that is governed a different way than a county road master does. And then the signage is also governed through a number of people that are, are built on that road.
So there's seven houses on it, and it always has been, I mean.
Okay, so whenever a 911 number came through, back in 2002 or whatever, maybe that one was missed, is what?
And I'm sure, and like I said, it's just, it's probably more our thing than anything.
It needs to be rectified and homologated, different, whether they, we're working on that.
Right.
Yeah, the key thing for the address and the street and everything is for the 911, for the services out to the residents in that area.
And there is some confusion when that does happen, is there?
Absolutely, if you're, as the fire chief, you understand, so. But is it, Darwin, you're the one that takes care of the road and?
Yeah, and so that, I was right, that there are multiple addresses on that, that street, and the nearest county road is, is Rainbow, and so, back in the day, when addressing it, I think it was 2002, like you mentioned, is, they all got assigned those, those Rainbow Road addresses, so everybody considers it just an extension of Autumn Street, which goes into the town side.
Well, the other end that goes through to Candy, which is also Candy, uh, number really, is actually Autumn Street, their addresses are, I believe, Autumn Street.
On the west end, close to Candy.
Yes.
So I'll have to look into that, and, you know, there's a renumbering, and it's a hassle for those that have to get renumbered, but it's something that the board can take up, but it's usually a request made by those that live on that street. And like Brad said, it's usually when, the typical process that we go through is, once there's a third address, then that third address person does bear the burden of the cost to have that renamed and numbered, so.
Well, since it's 57530, 1, 2, and 3, there was at least three addresses when we came up with it.
Sure, but again, that process was not handled by this board, it was handled by a?
And like I said, I'd just like to clarify, my complaint is more the pride of ownership than pride of, that we don't have a street.
And just naming it will not change the ownership, and it will not become a county maintained road.
No, no.
It's just a Penphilips easement, and I can attest to that, so I've seen it many times on the, on the map, so. Yeah, I would, I would definitely recommend you talk with the road master about, you know, what you guys can maintain and work together as sort of seven owners of currently all that street.
Right.
Because yes, it is definitely a rough road, probably one of the worst times for a, in the county, but, that close to town.
We used to have an elderly night bus neighbor in one of that houses that would dump thousands of dollars of gravel on it every year, and when he passed away, and it couldn't, just went away, so.
So, Eileen, one, one question that has come out several times here, swimming pool, is that you have that mark, is it true?
I, I did, but I don't trespass, I don't go on people's property, so kind of like the tires. You know, I'm from the street, so I couldn't tell that they had dirt in them, you know, I couldn't tell what was in the pool, it just kind of looks abandoned when the gravel by it.
If I can just make one point as, as a planning director, and especially for those who are in the meeting now, but those who may read this later in the paper, we need to follow the chain of command, right? So Eileen is our nuisance officer. When a letter gets sent, it's got her name on it, she should be the one that's contacting, no different than if I was the planning director, and I was sending out a letter on the land use violation. The contact needs to be made directly to that person, so that then they can work with the, those that may be found in non-compliance, so that we don't end up in a situation where we are today, where some progress has been being made, but there's been no contact, I mean, with the, the person that's in charge of that program. It would save the commission a lot of time, it would certainly save staff a lot of time, and yourself, and others who will be in a similar situation where there's.
Well, the letter says, if you do not agree with it, you must pay an appeal hearing, I mean.
And I, I haven't looked at the letter language right now, but certainly, and that's not a, you know, negative argument, I'm just saying, for those who will be in this process, and maybe the letter needs to be cleaned up a little bit, and spoke something that she inherited that.
Well, it's taken directly from the ordinance, so I, whatever the information is in the letter comes right that the ordinance specifies what has to be in that letter.
Well, without that discussion, Glenn did what she saw she had the right to do, which we were supposed to hearing, so.
Which is what it's supposed to do, within X amount of days, if you don't agree with it.
And I, you were more than well within your right, but with this discussion, I think we're going to be able to have some.
Am I the first discussion that has come up with this, I mean, as far as an appeal thing?
No.
Just like an appeal with that.
Maybe on the letter.
I agree, if it encouraged more conversation with, you know, that, the person in charge of that, that would be, because this is kind of a waste of time, and, you know, get way off topics and other topics, and, and so, yeah.
More information sharing.
Yeah.
If, if we looked in our rearview mirror, that's probably how it would invest, but going forward, it sounds like we're, we're in, we should have those discussions.
Right, because if that was clear stated, that, hey, you know, call and make a plan, or, you know, if you're just totally impignant about it, you know, request an appeal, I would have been happy to contact and, and go that direction and stuff, very, very down here, too.
Yes.
Talk about my swimming pool, my road, so, you know.
Many people do call me.
Yeah.
Just so that, you know, I have a lot of people that have called, and, you know, we always want to work with them, we always want to try to, you know, get this done and have them comply, and maybe we need extra time, and I have a lot of people right now that, okay, I'll have it done by the end of October, I need two more weeks. So the county is approachable, or I'm approachable.
Maybe just a little insert, first step is to contact and discuss, and then if you don't agree, then appeal. Is that something I can do?
I don't think I can, because the ordinance, I think it's a different discussion, we're going to have to have over the ordinance, because I'm, yeah, I'm committed to what the ordinance says.
Yeah.
The intent definitely is to work with people, and we, this brought out something that us as a board need to take a look at. Really appreciate your time.
Yeah, okay.
And we will look at that, so that it doesn't, the people that's willing to work with the county makes it a little easier. Thank you so much for taking my time today.
Yeah, no problem.
And well, just work with us.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Give our regards to the fire chief.
Okay, if you have a consult, again, I'm hired.
Hello.
Hello.
I just have a, a request for your approval of an increase in the, with funding for special end-of-year grant award. They usually do this on a different year, but we never know what the amount is until...
Unanticipated, extra time, specific.
And looks real straightforward.
It's $1,478, not particularly, but you can do it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, every dollar, I guess, every dollar. Well, we've got it on that, on the agenda for tomorrow to take action, so.
Okay, sounds great.
Appreciate you coming over. Mr. Berman.
Since the remodel of the other end, the sheriff and the community correction, we have to take out the old panic system. We are, we look at it in the new, which we, I mean, finished up the bid process and all that, we got the bids, so I want to recommend the panic system, so we have to cord out with Basin Telecom for $9,983.
Good question, could you explain to the audience what a panic system is?
Well, for each office, you have a case of emergency, you hit a button, it'll notify the sheriff's and 911.
Like a red button, I have that here.
Yeah.
If I am.
And then a Pico 44 comes out, and I'm just kidding.
This system would notify the sheriff's department and dispatch?
Yes.
I might have heard the old conversation, are you going to answer?
Sorry, I probably have my hands over now. So anyways, Ben, the, the judge has been asking about it, and everybody, we haven't got it down, so.
Right.
So I just need your approval on the quote I got from Basin Telecom for... So I just need your approval on the quote I got from Basin Telecom for, I said, nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars.
So question on, on this, if we approve this tomorrow and this is put in place, will there be training, will there be things set in place so that our employees in our department can already understand how this works, what processes?
Yeah, I will make that happen when I talk with Ken Goff, with Basin Telecom, have him go over with, either have one big meeting or all learned and all have a big meeting with all the party guys.
Kind of question.
Okay, Orlando.
Yeah, why, why does, is this the lobby courthouse?
Yes.
Why? What's the reason for it?
Well, everybody's requesting it, your judge is requesting it, the DA is requesting it, yes.
Everyone's requesting it?
Yes.
Did, this is replaced?
We make the tax collector's office is requesting it?
This is replacing what was already existing here.
How long ago was this, up in your place?
Well, since the remodel.
And you guys got panic buttons over here in the tax collector's office and other places?
We did have them in the past, yes. In every room, there was a panic, or a panic button.
Okay, thank you.
In this day and age, just as reasonable, not much, how many people are coming on? Anybody coming in that can be hostile or something, maybe?
Well, a person needs to know how to contact the sheriff, that's all. In this today's society, you have to.
Well, it's not only for protection of employees, it's for protection of the public also. That's, that's a very important thing to continue.
Well, we'll pick it up tomorrow, Dave.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is it, we're wired?
It's all, it's all court, it's all wireless. Okay.
One, one other question, um, I don't know, I probably should have talked to you one on one earlier about this, is the court system going to pay any of this bill or is it all in a fund, are they willing to?
They are willing to take a portion of it.
I thought they would be, thank you.
How much is this going to cost?
What's it going to cost?
Yeah, what's the contract?
Nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Looks to be split, kind of, and, and general fund.
What's that?
Looks to be split with the court system.
Probably on a percentage basis, the day before with the court system, yeah.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Darlin.
Brad, planning commission recommendation?
Yes, that's not bad.
Is it dead?
It might, it must be. Anyways, I'll, I'll speak louder if you don't focus.
It's not on.
That is my thing. So, uh, planning commission recommendation, Jalen Shuffield, uh, he's served since April of two thousand and fifteen, so not a complete full term yet, as we staggered the positions a number of years ago, he's telling the position that was vacant and, uh, so he's, um, been willing to serve another term, the planning commission last meeting, uh, gave that recommendation formally, and, uh, I'm bringing it to you now, uh, for your approval tomorrow, and, uh, if you have any questions, I'd like to answer them.
No, I, Jalen's been doing a, a really good job for you, you made the, the comment, I think, in one of your write-ups that he's, uh, been well-prepared, attends the meetings regularly, he has quite a little journey to, to come, to, to be there, and so I think we have a bona fide, uh, agreement with that.
Yeah, I appreciate all the board members we have, and we keep to our bylaws and get representation from all around the county, always encourage more, um, this is a central county position, a little, you know, maybe considered a little north, um, but it's, uh, certainly a pleasure to have them on there, he's, he's a, a good asset to...
Well, having those, having those positions throughout the county, I think is the only way to go, and, uh, I, I think all, all of our counties represent it well, so. Okay, we'll take it up tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
And we have a time that, that he's going to give us an update at ten, but, uh, we've got our two additional that I think we'll go to, we're going to try and save the security camera, camera policy, uh, update discussion for the end, we have some people that want to come in, so.
For tomorrow?
Yeah.
Um, we have the nuisance appeal request action consideration on tomorrow, do we need to take that off?
I, I, unless the board disagrees, I believe we do, uh, I think what we said is...
Wasn't going to say we do, we do take it off, if something...
That's what I'm recommending, because Aileen and Jen are going to work together and I don't, I think we just be reacting the same thing today, so.
And agreement.
Okay.
A question, a request, Dan?
Yes.
When you get to this county security camera policy update?
Mm-hmm.
Could I get a copy of that before the discussion, so I can get a chance to read what you folks are proposing?
That wouldn't be a problem.
It's a draft.
It's a draft.
Could I have, yeah, I'm sure, would you say that since I can get a copy of the draft?
It'd be good to have the existing kind of draft, so you know what the changes are.
Okay, Greg, could you have that before?
Denise can, you can do that.
Do we, if there's other...
We'll have to take a break.
Yeah, we'll take a break before we have that discussion, Denise, let me check.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we'll start with the Flowery Storage Agreement, Denise.
Okay, so, as a gentleman aware, John Flowery has put in a fantastic park in Christmas Valley, he has now added to that park a barbecue area, he is asking the county to be able to store some camera equipment, just his, um, box for his cameras to feed into, um, in the annex, it's the closest to the area.
Secure area.
Mm-hmm, and he really wants to make that, make sure that that's secure, my recommendation is to go ahead with that, your recommendation was for me to work with legal counsel to come up with an agreement, which I did, I apologize if I didn't get it to you sooner.
What is that?
It was sitting on, it was sitting on my credential label for you. So anyway, this storage agreement before you...
I picked up my packet yesterday morning.
This came yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
I worked with Mr. Flowery yesterday on it. Um, anyway, so the agreement before you has been with legal counsel's review, he sees no issues, Mr. Fr- Flowery is in agreement as well, so.
And Dave, you work with Dave also, because it will be in the annex building.
Correct, and, um, I'll also work with Dave and Josh will be on site when the equipment gets installed, I'll let Dave know so that those people know, so, yeah.
And there's space for it?
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously.
Yeah, and I just, I think that's a nice thing to do, since they, they've really done a great thing with that, so.
It's a part of their security for the community, I'm sure, because our kids use that part.
Well, that's, well, yeah, very, you know...
It's literally a...
Just to clarify, this is for their security, we're not providing security for Flowery Park.
We are not.
This is for them to house a component of security, so that they will review and, and manage for themselves.
Correct, we will have no responsibility or liability for the area.
Great, well, we'll, we'll leave it on for tomorrow, please.
Okay.
For a formal decision. And we'll go to the workforce discussion before Commissioner Winters starts down there, I just said for the record, I know last week and I was out of town, he was able to set in for me with, uh, our East Cascades Workforce Investment Board Director, uh, she's located in Bend, the East Cascades is a ten-county member organization, uh, dealing with the COIC program, and both the, the youth and the adult, uh, in attendance was Commissioner Winters, Jake Greer, our Community Corrections Director was there, uh, Amy Gibbs, who runs the employment agency for the Central Oregon region, uh...
Mr. Ortiz from Goodwill.
Mr. Ortiz from Goodwill, Heather was there, of course.
And Chip Massey.
And Chip Massey, who is in charge of our workforce program down at Lake and Clamath County, we have a two-county, uh, service provider, it's Clamath Community College, and, uh, they, here, the primary reason is we went forward is, uh, there's been this huge reduction since the year two thousand with funding. So Orlando, been here, my instructions, when the meeting started, yeah.
I did.
That's two thousand, profession fine.
Okay, so anyway, since two thousand, when the program here in Oregon was funded at fifty-nine million across the state, it's been reduced to thirty-two million, and the most recent reduction, uh, within the ten-county consortium has made it such that our service provider for the previous nine or ten years, COIC, Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, was no longer able, as much as they wanted to and as much good as they had done in our two counties, they were no longer able to make it pencil out to be able to provide service, Clamath Community College, a partner that's a growing partner in our county, uh, stepped up, they've been interested in the workforce side of it because they've got the educational side, which just kind of is a natural plan, so, anyway, uh, the funding that they were able to come up with through the program was about for a half-time person, so we've been working as a board with others in the community on coming up with some additional funding, Jake has stepped up, the board has stepped up with, uh, some, some funds that we've had, and it's just the start of, of that whole process, but we're looking, hopefully, as a mental commitment to three-quarters time, if not full-time, in providing service throughout the county. The devil, as they say, is in the details, we're a long ways from getting there, but we recognize that we're one county, and we have to provide and want to provide service throughout the county to benefit all the citizens. Uh, just a little side note, the, uh, youth side of the program, the educational, the, the training and the, the GED program, et cetera, have been so successful that Lakeview High School, uh, Will Cahill, the superintendent, they worked with KCC and they took that program over, so that's currently being, uh, ran by the school and they, they, they're kind of in conjunction with, uh, uh, KCC still, because they have a relationship there anyway. But with that said, it's location, we can't afford where we were at before that building, where we were at, it, it, or where they were at, it's not a county position, but, uh, there's a lot going on there, but bottom line, even if it was available, it's too expensive to...
Talking about the old...
COIC building, yeah, back here, off the back street. So, Commissioner Winters, uh, as I said, set in for me, I, I am the liaison to that and have been for a number of years, and, uh, I think they got some good work done, and he's here to...
Yeah, me give it over to you?
I would love that, thank you.
What a great day to work with such energetic people, and I think Jake, uh, he might echo those words, uh, Heather, Chip, Amy, uh, and everybody else there, uh, what we were looking at is options to be able to keep that presence here for our workforce, uh, on behalf, he asked me to sit in, uh, we, uh, we have lunch meeting, then we toured the courthouse, the synergies here in the courthouse, there's the adult correction side of it and clientele from there to be able to get right in and get some workforce training, uh, I was able to introduce them to our veteran service officer and, uh, the synergies there to be able to get the, the veterans that need workforce training. So we talked to tour the courthouse, we, uh, looked at potential here, the one potential here was the old treasurer's office downstairs, so that's where we started our tour, after that, we walked over to the Marius Building, uh, went through, uh, talked to a few people in public health there, then we went upstairs, talked to Jim Walls, L.C.R.I., and showed him the options of the Marius Building and Jim was able to weigh out the costs that he pays for that, that's interest in that. I also, uh, we talked about Goodwill, uh, the synergies that, that there for some clientele that, that can't, uh, go into the, uh, Goodwill Building, talked about, uh, federal buildings, based around, there's federal dollars that come in through this, uh, talked to him about the post office, if that's where the U.S. Fish and Wildlife used to be, that that could be an option, even though they've ran into a few issues over there, and, um, showed them some storefronts that were empty and so on. It come down to if there's going to be one person running this office, um, there's some safety, security things possibly there also, but it, it's about being able to, um, cut their overhead the best we can cut their overhead. It was, like I say, it was so positive, so energetic, um, that, that is just a good day. I left it entirely up to them as they looked at all those places, what did they think would be the best fit and how would we build it if the most people that can, uh, that's able to be able to use this resource and put it, put it on the ground. They all said, we would like to be located in the courthouse, so that's where I put this on the agenda, uh, we have, uh, the building, or the, within the building, we have the, the old treasurer's office, which is big enough to allow for...
It's downstairs?
Yeah, it's downstairs. I showed them the elevator, I showed them access points, I showed them everything, and, um, so what came back is that's where they would like to be able to get there, um, we would have to look at the square foot and negotiate and talk to them about if that could be in kind, which would help leverage other dollars to be able to keep them here, or something of that nature, I guess that'd have to be worked out, that, um, is very positive and, so I'm bringing it forward for discussion, um, and if, if we're interested in doing that, then, uh, what I do, I've talked to Dave Berman, our facilities guy, so, and then we would start a plan and try to figure out how much time it would take before, it's being used for some storage at this time for that bill to get out, we'd have to work with them, since they think it has to be, uh, minor remodeled, not really good model moved, or, um, talk to them about that, so. If this board wants to look at that avenue, um, then we'll start the next process, I guess, for, so.
And this third stuff, they move out, you have a location to move?
I, I call it the dungeon, I would think, I don't know what's in there, at this point, uh, the sheriff's department's using it right now, I don't know what's in there, I haven't talked to the sheriff, because I want to be, there's no reason to, um, to worry about that unless this board is interested in, um, looking at that, um, you know, the, it's a, it's a large office space, actually, it's very large, so to be able to set up some computer lab type stuff and for the workforce training, it seems to fit, and I, I'd like to give Jake a chance to talk if he wants to, um, it would just, I, it's encouraging to work with people that are so much energy and positive, and it's very good.
I, I don't disagree with anything Commissioner Winters, um, discussed, I think, I think ideally it'd be great to have him here, it'd be, were, if he beneficial to my adult probation office, because we, we'll have that close networking relationship, we can send people down where available if there's question, uh, and I don't think there's going to be a stigma of coming into the courthouse for folks, just not on supervision, just for everybody, the, the community, why, county, why, uh, like folks through the courthouse to meet with the assessor, meet with the county clerk, and also come to the courthouse and meet with workforce development and, uh, building employment department, so I, I think it's a great opportunity for the county to help house this and assist in leading that up and running, um, I think it speaks loudly for the work that we're doing to get them here and keep them here.
Well, I would just make a couple of quick comments, I just want to reiterate my appreciation, Jake, to you, not only for your support, but being there last week, and wish Winters, along with the rest of the group that, that were there, I sensed through the emails that came out right after, that the whole group was just incredibly appreciative of the day and, and, and what they got to see and talk about and the desires that everyone has, so I think we're, from not that long ago, being ten percent of the way there, I think we're ninety percent of the way there on making this happen in a positive way, so I for one would definitely support what you folks found to be, uh, the ideal location, I think the key phrase that you use, Commissioner Winters, is you let them decide after looking at many places, alternatives, potential alternatives in the community, that they came back to here, and I, I, I agree, I think it's a perfect location, so, that's where I'm at, I'm, I'm, I'm more than ready, we can, we can leave it on for tomorrow for, for a decision, but I'm more than ready to make that decision, because the sooner we move, the sooner we but I'm more than ready to make that decision because the sooner we move, the sooner we get things going for the community at large.
I'm not opposed to it, but what was their secondary emphasis there?
The location? They never said outright that I would think it would be the Marius Building. Would that be a fair question to ask them, that I would think it'd be the Marius Building?
Having it in courthouse works with Jake pretty good. Moving the storage or doing something with, here is the sheriff, need to address that, find a location for that, too. Yeah, I'm, I'm too, it would be, either the Marius or here, either one.
Yeah, but the, just clarification, it's short-term storage, that, that office space has always, in my opinion, been relatively...
Well, what I'm saying, we had to find a location.
Yeah, yeah, we, we do, but that's some good office space.
And I, I'd like to just interject, I like the idea, too, that they were able to meet with Charlie Pike in the veterans' office, because Charlie can work with his veterans as well, right here in the courthouse, working with workforce. So we're kind of, it, it's great for the veterans' office and my...
Well, and Jake, and I didn't say it in the discussion, but Charlie's working with the state folks, relative, he can't, he doesn't have the latitude to take money out of his direct budget, but he's working on, there's some programs that are fairly well-funded out there that he's made Chip very aware of it, Heather's very aware of it, and they're going to be looking to get, you know, some of those dollars potentially, and it's going to be geared towards veteran services. Once, once again, veterans come in, it's one-stop shop type thing.
Well, you're, you're touching on one of the things that, that was talked about is the location, if they, if they do locate in here, where that office is, the comfort for the veterans to come into one door and walk right down the hall without having to walk through the whole, whole county. That was, several people acknowledge that a lot of veterans don't want to deal with walking through everybody else to get someplace, and that synergy's there. It was talked about, where there's an entry that way also.
Yeah.
Chaylon?
So what is the access? Is it, is there access from the central staircase in the foyer down to that office?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's access from the other end, there's access from this outside door, cutting down...
The east entrance is close to the public.
Yes. Well, I just mean downstairs. If you came in the foyer, you don't, if you were down, seeing you, you could walk down the stairs down there.
The elevator is accessible on that end. Coming from the outside end is not, not...
Right.
From what the emphasis is.
Internally, okay.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Commissioner?
So what did we, I, what did we decide?
Well, I'd like to leave it on the agenda.
Leave it on the agenda, just I know we're going to move the other items. I mean, supportive, need to address other issues along with it.
Okay. So Betty, you're on here in about seven minutes. I think we'll take a break.
All right.
And we'll, I'll give Denise time to make a copy of that, to remember this, for what we're doing.